Joining us now in progress, are we recording? Yes, we're all good, okay. Welcome back, Westford. We called into session, had our executive sessions, and now we're back. And we're going to rejoin the flow here with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by...
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are now with open forum and announcements, and we first want to congratulate Christine Collins for her amazing service. Christine?
Yeah, thank you very much. Unfortunately Christine cannot be with us tonight, but she is enjoying a well-deserved vacation after her retirement. For those of you who don't know, Christine Collins has been our treasure collector here in Westford for 14 years. Her last day was last Friday, August 8th. In addition to her serving as our treasure collector, she was also on the Health Insurance Trust, and she also was on the TRED Committee. She touched every single department that we have, as she's always receiving the turnovers and interacting on the budgets. And also, she probably interacted with many, many boards and committees, and certainly many, many taxpayers. So she was a steady source of information, she was always calm, helpful, a wonderful demeanor, was always there if someone had a concern or needed to go on a payment plan, she was always willing to work with that person. So we really wish her well in her retirement. Hopefully she has many happy years ahead of her. So I just want to say congratulations to Christine this evening.
Yeah, and I'll have to go out of my way to make sure I sent her a note, because I always appreciate her patience and her good spirits.
Absolutely.
And she also was helpful in finding a replacement, right?
She was. So we have found a replacement for Christine. Her name is Hannah Muller. She was the treasure collector with the Town of Broughton. And actually Christine came from the Town of Broughton. Hannah had worked in the treasure collector's office for over 13 years there, and knew Christine from both their Broughton connection as well as our treasure collector connection. So we're excited to welcome her this week, and I'm sure the board and the public will meet her in the near future. Thank you.
It's great, Christine must have, I should say Christine must have given you a good reference.
Yes, she did, she did.
Any open forum announcements from the board? Tonight? Any open forum...
Two other things.
Oh, please go ahead.
Just two other things. Wanted to let the public know that West Nile virus was detected in mosquitoes in Westford this week. You may have been hearing about this on the news. Again, not a person infected, but mosquitoes were trapped. We are planning to work with the state on spraying later this week, so today we just put out a newsflash that those mosquitoes were detected. We will be putting out additional information on spraying and protecting yourselves during that period of time. If you do have any questions on that, the Health Department is the experts on that situation. And then I also just want to highlight, we're still looking for board and committee members to join our 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee, our Resident Voting Study Committee, and then just this week we put out a call for residents to participate on the Route 40 corridor study. That was a resolution at the March 2023 town meeting, and the MBTA Catalyst Bike and Pedestrian Study along the Route 110 corridor. We also have spaces available on the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Committee. So I know it's a slow time of year, people are either away, you're kind of acclimating to come back to the school year, normal pace of life in September, but if you know of anybody who may be interested in this, they can fill out a volunteer activity form, and we're happy to review that and get these committees moving along.
Great, thank you, Christine.
We have one member of the public online.
Okay. Why don't I just ask if anyone's here, any members of the public for open forum tonight? Please.
Mike O'Connell, Port Force, South Humser Grove. I just wanted to take a moment and urge the Select Board to reconsider and the Code of Conduct that was discussed at the last meeting and not let that die. I think it's important to have that in place. I think it would also be good to have that extend to Code of Conduct for board members or committee members in relation to the public, and not just the other way around. Again, I would urge you to bring that up again and move it forward. Hopefully it will never be used again in the future, but it's better to have it and never need it, than need it again and not have it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. We are doing a review of various onboarding forms and other techniques that other towns are doing, and we will bring back the topic of Code of Conduct and onboarding and standard norm setting in a future meeting. And we're thinking that's maybe next meeting or the meeting after?
By the meeting after.
Okay, so likely be not next meeting, but the one... So thank you for the comment. Okay, and we have members of the public too. Wendy?
Thank you. Wendy Floyd, 16 Pleasant Street. Also, I would like to mention that the, I believe the Code of Conduct is an important piece for protecting community volunteers, and I would like to see that be moved forward. And on another note, as part of the Westford LGBTQ Friends and Allies Facebook page, I do want to mention, I do volunteer work for Greater Boston PFLAG, and we are hearing some potential issues with healthcare providers in Boston area providing gender-affirming medicines or care to particularly youth. And I did send a letter to that effect to the, to the town manager, Select Board, and School Committee recently, and just wanted to ask the town to continue to support the S.H.I.E.L.D. law that safeguards sensitive data, including a physician's name, remain confidential to patients. I have heard about the federal government issuing subpoenas to healthcare providers trying to seek private patient information and data about care and medication. And it is critical that that information be protected so that our citizens are protected from any potential backlash. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy, for your comments. Okay, there being no other items for open forum, we'll now move to the consent agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. First, a road bike race. The event is the Tour de Cure, New England. The applicant is American Diabetes Association, Jonathan Madrigal. The date is August 17th, 2025, and the time is 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Location is various, presumably the route through town. We also have a banner request. The event is Heroes of Hunger, Fill the Van. The applicant is the Cameron Senior Center. The dates are Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 through the 12th. Location is J.B. Fletcher Library. We also have a road street closure request. The event is United Methodist Church Block Party. The applicant is David Welsh. Date is September 7th, 2025. The time is 9:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Location is 10 Church Street, to the intersection of Broadway. We also have requests for the event, for an event, Burn Avenue Block Party. The applicant is Maureen Wolczynski. The date is September 13th, 2025, with a rain date of the 14th. I hope I said that correctly. September 13th, 2025, with a rain date of the 14th. The time is 1:30 PM to 6:30 PM, and the location is number 10 and number 35 Burn Avenue. We also have a town common request. The event is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and will be fifth, the request is to put 15-yard signs on the common. The applicant is Gail Johnson, the Westford Public Health Nurse. The dates are October 1st through the 31st, 2025. Time is continuous. And then a general license request. The event is Witch's Woods. The applicant is Melissa Robbins on behalf of Neshoba Hill Corporation. Location is Neshoba Valley Ski Area, 79 Powers Road. The dates are October 3rd through 5th, 10 through 12th, 17th through 19th, 24th through 26th, 31st and the 1st of November, 2025, and the time is 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. And with that, we are at our 707 meeting item, which is a joint meeting of the School Committee to approve requests for services for owner's project management, OPM, for the Colonel John Robinson Elementary School Project. Mina, I'm sure you'd like to call your committee to order.
I will, I'm just gonna get, I think we have two more online.
Yep, I'm promoting Shayna and Bill right now.
Yep.
So we will call the School Committee to order. Seven, ten.
Excellent.
Yeah, I can.
You can speak to this?
Sure, I can. So as members of the School Committee and Select Board are aware, the town meeting authorized us to move into the feasibility process with the Colonel John Robinson Elementary School Project. We do have a building committee, which is Young is the chairperson of that committee. We, our next step in the process is to put out a request for services for the owner's project manager. With that, then subsequently comes, we hire a designer, so it would be an architect and civil engineering joint firm. All of this process is very prescribed by the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority. So what you see in front of you for the request for services is really boilerplate with Westford specific information. Earlier today, the Robinson School Building Committee voted to release the request for services, and this evening we're asking for the Joint Select Board School Committee to do the same. We have a very prescribed date and time specification for putting out the bid tomorrow, allowing a three-week timeframe for these OPMs to respond. During that time, having a site visit, and then also having a time for asking questions, we respond to those questions. And then also today, the Robinson School Building Committee appointed a selection committee that would review all of the requests for services that come in, provide a recommendation for three firms to be interviewed, hold those interviews, and then bring that to the school committee, excuse me, the school building committee for their approval, and then ultimately to the Mass School Building Authority, because they have to approve that as well. And then we can start with the reimbursements. If we do hire, come under a contract with that OPM, hire that OPM, we can start those reimbursements for services at that point in time. So ultimately, we are asking for your approval to issue this request for services and then move forward with that process. I don't know if you'd like to add anything as the chair of the Robinson School Building Committee?
Nope, just that the, maybe to...
Do you want to cut the microphone?
Maybe an update on the timeline, that the, we don't expect to be under contract with the OPM until after the MSBA approves that step, which would be at their meeting on November 3rd, which might be a longer timeline than we had originally talked about. So I just want to keep updating the public on that. And just my very sincere thanks to the members of the Building Committee who stepped forward to join the Selection Committee, because that's an indefinite amount of hours that, of their personal time that they're sacrificing to review those proposals and rank them. And we're, I'm very grateful that two members from, that are resident seats who work in the industry, Lindsay Richard and Steve Taylor, Tyler?
Taylor?
I'm blanking on that. Taylor, stepped up to do that. So I think we're gonna have a really great process.
Yeah, I would just echo that there's some really, really capable people on this committee, so we're in good hands.
And I'd like to thank Mike Edwards for working with Lindsay as well on getting all those documents together and going back and forth to them. MSBA, I think it's been a successful learning process.
Thank you, Mike.
Before we go to vote, any questions from the Select Board? Okay.
Anything for the Speaker? And so...
By practice, we usually, usually the School Committee would go first, and then we'll vote.
To vote?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I will take a motion to approve the request for services for the owner's project management for the Robinson School Project.
So moved.
Second.
And I will call, Bill?
Aye.
Shayna?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I am an aye.
And I will likewise entertain a motion to approve the request for services for the owner's project management for the Colonel John Robinson Elementary School Project. So moved.
Second.
There you go. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you so much for being here tonight. If you'd like to call your committee into adjournment.
Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Bill?
Aye.
Shayna?
Aye.
Well? Aye.
Lauren? Aye. Jess? Aye. Tom?
Aye. And I'm an aye.
Good, thank you so much. Good to see you all.
Shark, let's move.
Sean, let's move.
Night, guys.
Good night. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our 7:10 public hearing. It's a street acceptance and layout of D. Donato Drive, formerly 472 and 476 Groton Road. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. All right, the public hearing is open, and we are joined tonight by Melissa Robbins. Welcome. Attorney Robbins?
Can anybody hear me?
You're very, very light, low.
Very, very low. No one's ever told me that before, Kristen. First for me. Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrell and Robbins. As Mr. Chair has pointed out, we're here tonight for the road acceptance for D. Donato Drive. For those of you that are wondering how we came up with the street name, it's an honor of the previous homeowner. In your packet, you will see that we have comments from the fire department, that they are satisfied with the layout and the location of the hydrants. We have a letter from Paul, or an email, I think, from Paul Sterrett from the engineering department, saying that he has no comments. We've worked closely with engineering throughout this entire process. The road is constructed to full standards. Happy to answer any questions the board may have. If the board has no questions this evening, I would just ask that the board send this to the planning board meeting on August 18th for their review and comment, and then I can come back to the select board at their subsequent meeting to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Robbins. Why don't we start with questions from the, from the board?
I don't have anything else pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah, no, we appreciate the staff putting in time to answer questions. Okay, any members of the public have any, any questions or comments about this road acceptance? I don't see here any in the room, but on line.
I don't see anyone online. I know someone did come to the town manager's office just because they did receive the abutter's notification. They were concerned that something else was going to be built or something else was going to be happening, so we just educated them that this is just part of the process of accepting the road as a public right-of-way per mass general law, and there was then going to be going to planning board and town meetings. So for anyone watching who may want to understand a little bit more about acceptance of a public way, that is why we are having this public hearing.
Okay, great. I don't see any other comments. So Kristen, the action tonight is for us to forward this to the planning board?
So you would close the public hearing and then refer this to the planning board for their review and approval, and then we would discuss in September putting this on the town meeting, Lawrence?
Okay. Very well, so the business of this item is done, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you, Attorney Robbins.
So we have to vote to send it to the planning board?
Okay. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this and forward it to the planning board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Aye.
You too.
Okay. No other, no other actions on that.
No, I'm set.
Okay. Next up is a 7:20 item. It's a request to authorize the town manager to sign the Massachusetts Interagency Mutual Aid Agreement for the Community Outreach Initiative Network, or COIN, to provide social work services through the Department of Mental Health Support Grant for jail diversion, and we're welcomed here by our chief police, Mark Chambers. Welcome, Chief Chambers.
Good evening. So, Westford Police has been a part of the COIN initiative since 2017, when it was originally awarded the grant through the Pepperell Police Department. And all the communities that were served at the time underneath the Air District Court all joined in, so there were originally 10 communities that participated. And it originally started with just follow-up conversations with people that were experiencing substance abuse and mental health crisis. And that slowly evolved over the next several years to a community coordinator and two mobile clinicians, which we had started about two years ago. It originally was an IMA that was, that was approved just by the police chiefs at the time back in 2017, but over the course of the past two years, the original service provider family continuity was purchased by Advocates, which is a much larger group, and there were some program changes that a lot of the chiefs had comments about. We sort of lost a little bit of the local control. The three employees at the time, about two months ago now, all gave their notice. So we looked at it as an opportunity to improve the program and get it back to more local control and for us to be able to have some say in how the program is run, which is requiring a new IMA. So currently, there's nine, there will be nine communities covered by the IMA. Air, the Town of Air is currently the grant manager, and they'll essentially be coming on as grant employees for the Town of Air, but under the regional grant process. So in order for us to continue this much-needed work, we, we need to have the IMA in place that way we can continue to benefit from this. It's separate from, like, it's separate from what Allison Christopher would do, where Nicole Laviolette, these are people that are in crisis that the police departments come across. Originally, we'll have the mobile clinician make contact. They're able to do on-scene assessments. One of our former mobile clinicians was actually a doctorate-level clinician, so they're able to give us recommendations or even Section 12 individuals themselves if they're a danger. So it really gives us other avenues to pursue other than police officers on scene making, always having to make those types of referrals. The community coordinator then follows up with those individuals that we've interacted with, assists them in locating services for domestic violence, for housing, for additional funds, food insecurities. They run the full gamut of services that people may need when they come into contact with the police. So it's not just a jail diversion program. We've been able to expand it. And I would like to just mention that this is one of the largest GDP grants that's offered, that was awarded through DMH because of the work that we've been able to do in our, in our area. And with the dissolution of the Shoba Valley Medical Center, this, this is an absolutely needed service in our area. So we did have, I know I'm getting a little long, Linda, because it should be shorter, but we did have the original, the first round of interviews for the program coordinator on Thursday. We had several very qualified applicants, including the person that actually used to run the COIN program. She would like to continue to be able to work, and she was just offered a, she was provided a conditional letter, offer of employment through the Air, through the Air, the Town of Air. So we are moving forward with it, and we'd like to be able to settle up the IMAs, that way we can benefit, continue to benefit from the great program that it is.
Yeah, thanks, Chief, and thanks for explaining so clearly why it's so valuable. I know we've been part of this for a while, and every time I've asked you about it, you've had lots of examples of when de-escalation, better service, just better interaction with people in crisis that this program can provide, so.
Just thank you, Chief, for all that explanation. We did say that the draft IMA was going to be in your packet. Town Council is still working on that. Town Council actually works for many of the municipalities that are going to be signing on to this IMA, so that is why it's currently not in your packet. That's why I'm requesting that you authorize the town manager to sign the IMA. We're happy to circulate it outside of a public meeting, but as Chief alluded to, we've been without this service for a few months now.
Yeah, almost two months.
And we do have someone who will likely be coming on board, so time is the essence to get these services back in place.
Okay. So both any questions to the chief and also any questions about the process that Kristen recommends, basically authorizing her to engage in our behalf on an agreement that is still, still in process, but time-sensitive? Chris?
So one question I have, Chief, is the grant that's supporting all this, how long, how much money is it? How long will we be able to get these services for?
So we've been able to secure the grant each year since 2017.
It's a yearly renewal?
And it, yeah, and we've been able to increase the amount of the grant to hire additional personnel because the data supports it. I believe the grant this year was funded for about $386,000 for the nine communities. It has already been awarded through, I believe, November, the first three months, no, no, so it'll be July, it's October, sorry, already through October. There was conversations at the state level whether or not these, these grants were going to continue. We have had affirmation that they are. We anticipate that the grant is going to be fully funded. And again, there's no financial liability to the Town of Westford. The Town of Air has really stepped up and hired these, will be hiring these individuals based on the grant funding.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Yeah, please.
June McMorrow, Kings Pine Road. So I think this is a good program, and I just have a question. Should I ask you, or?
If you don't mind.
I'll ask you.
Ask me, and I may redirect to the chief.
So I think that, you know, things like this don't always happen, like, from 9:00 to 5:00. So I'm just trying to understand, is there an on-call person for nights, evenings, weekends, when things like this can happen? Or is this more of a referral and follow-up for the next business day kind of thing? I'm just trying to understand how this works.
Yeah, great, great question, please, Chief.
So we do have a mobile, we do have two mobile clinicians funded through the grant, but they're shared between the nine communities. But where they're based is, is data-driven. So Westford benefits from the mobile clinician's presence two days a week, from 11:00 AM till 7:00 PM, because the data suggests that that's when we are the most active.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
From 11?
Yep, 11, oh, sorry, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay. And then what will happen then, if, even if the clinician is working in another community, if we have a person that's experienced a crisis and that clinician is available, they will actually be transported by the local police department to the Department of Need to have them respond at the scene. All of the follow-ups are documented by the police officers, which are then forwarded to the COIN program coordinator and the community outreach personnel, and they do the follow-ups the next day. And then they do extensive follow-up over the next several weeks to months to make sure that people, if they wish it, they follow up on services.
So does the mobile clinician mean it's an on-call person?
No, they are not on-call.
Then not on-call?
They are not on-call.
Okay.
So we do, we do have other services that we can, that we can depend on out of Lowell. Ben Fen has, has some on-call clinicians, although for us in the police department, usually situations that develop that require on-call, we're going to handle much more immediately, and then we will seek additional services at the hospital with the individual.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Great, thanks, Chief. Any other questions for the chief?
I don't see anyone online.
Okay, so I think the, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the Massachusetts Interagency Mutual Aid Agreement, the Community Outreach Initiative Network, COIN, to provide social work services through the Department of Mental Health Support Grant for jail diversion. So moved. There you go. Great, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we are now to our 7:30 agenda items of old and new business. The first up is to request and approve and sign the India Day Proclamation for August 15th, 2025. And we did have that document circulate, and we have signed it. I don't know if there's any further discussion or questions for this item. If not, I think we consider this item complete, so we have reviewed it and signed it. Okay. Next up, select board appointment of one full member to the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028, and consider a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. Maybe we should hear what the recommendation of the Conservation Commission, or the, the recommendation is, are these people?
So I can clarify a little bit. So the Conservation Commission did their best to abide by the new policy for board and committee appointments. We are wrapping up the final touches on that to get it out to all boards and committees, but we were able to notify the Conservation Commission of that. We do have the chairperson of the Conservation Commission here in the room. These four individuals had applied within the past two years to sit on the Conservation Commission. My understanding is that one of the individuals was no longer interested, one was contacted, and we could not reach them, and they did not reply. And then Lauren and June did appear at the Conservation Commission meeting. The Conservation Commission, my understanding with the recommendation you received in your packet, has recommended Lauren Hartnett to be on the Conservation Commission. This is your appointing authority, so I believe June McMorrow and Lauren are in the room, if you'd like to hear from either of them, and then continue on with your appointment process, and I'm sure the chair is willing to make any comments if you have any questions as well.
Okay, well, if either of the candidates would like to speak with the board, you're certainly invited, and we're very grateful that you're here. And I guess before we invite the Conservation Commission chair up, do members of the board have any questions for the chair, or?
Nope, other than I appreciate that they took the time to try to follow the process. I think that does help, so thank you for doing that.
Okay, if, if the board is satisfied, doesn't have any questions, I guess I can also ask the public if they have any questions about the process before we move forward and entertain the nomination? Okay, so I think what's next is if anyone would like to make a nomination for the appointment of one full member of the Conservation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
I'd like to nominate Lauren Hartnett.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and take a vote for the person that's been nominated and seconded. John, so it's, it's an aye or nay vote for the, for Lauren Hartnett for this position?
Aye.
A nay vote?
It's, you're either voting yes or no.
A and, a aye vote?
Aye or nay is what I said.
Okay.
Or yes or no? Yes or no? We don't have to go into Old English. We can say in the century, okay. Just, just making it clear that it's a yes, yes/no vote. So, John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye, yes.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. So thank you, Lauren, and thank you, June, for your interest in the position, and welcome. Okay, next up, select board appointment of one alternate member of the Affordable Housing Trust to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term expiring June 30th, 2027, and consider a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust for Andrea Perenter Suites.
So you have a memo in your packet from the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, Joan Proto, recommending that they renominate Andrea Perenter Suite for the alternate position for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, any questions from the board about this? Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Andrea Perenter Suite as an alternate member to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
No move.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Board reports and updates. Any board reports or updates tonight? We already talked about earlier, but the Robinson School Building Committee is just a, it's a great, high-function committee, very, very capable people on it, so it's, it's always exciting to have people who know so much more than you do beyond a committee, because it's, they just make, make everything so much better, so.
Tom, while we're on this subject, what, what are we thinking is going to be the, the next committee or board that might come? Give us an update.
Oh, on the board reports and updates?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're trying to sync them up with the areas of strategic reviews. Maybe that's something we can take up, Kristen, is I know you've got two areas of interest coming up.
Yep.
You've got the, it's a...
Sustainability.
Thank you, sustainability, and then followed by the housing.
Right.
So maybe we can invite the sustainability-related committees to be part of that and then housing to come and join that.
That would be great.
So we'll be ready for the next meeting for the sustainability strategic.
I would want to talk with both of those boards first, so we may actually try to push that one.
Okay.
I was planning to present that to them first and then this board, but I actually like the idea of syncing that up, and we can work with both of them to come and present everything.
So it would be the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee and the Recycling.
And the Recycling Commission. And let me just get with them and kind of figure out timelines of that. We can do one in September.
I think that's a good way to do it because all the topics are on our mind, and there's a lot of synergy between those committees, so. Great, thank you, Mike, that's a good plan. Okay, on to town manager's report.
So under your executive session, you reviewed the amendment to the fiscal year 26 Non-Unit Paying Classification Plan. We'd be requesting you to approve that amendment on this item.
And just members of the public, you want to just briefly explain, Kristen, what that is?
Yeah, essentially. So in the packet, we describe that we have a pay and classification plan for non-union employees. Based upon merit adjustments, we do need to make an adjustment to the top of the band for Class 6 and 1. We also have done some market analysis for our transportation dispatcher and our COA van drivers, and are making slight adjustments in the classification schedule for those items as well. Your board previously approved the full pay and classification plan for fiscal year 26 back in April, but these adjustments were realized over the course of the past few months. And for the members of the public and the board wondering, these are all within the budget for fiscal '26, does not require a budget adjustment.
Great, thank you, Kristen. Any questions from the board? I know we've already discussed this, but. Any questions from the public or anybody online? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the fiscal '26 Non-Unit Paying Classification Plan as detailed in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
Wait for you. John.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Moving on to purchase orders, I'll just go through all of them. If there's a hole, please let me know. The first is for J.A. Healy for diesel fuel for fiscal '26 in the amount of $15,000 as requested by the fire department. Coastal medical billing for medical billing services for fiscal '26 in the amount of $35,000 as requested by the fire department. Merrimack Valley Emergency Physicians Incorporated for medical direction services for fiscal '26 in the amount of $18,000 as requested by the fire department. Bound Tree Medical Supplies for health and medical supplies for fiscal '26 in the amount of $45,000 as requested by the fire department. Pace Analytical for before testing in the amount of $20,000 as requested by the town manager's office. Nighthawks Track and Field for fiscal '26 recreation programming in the amount of $22,220 as requested by the recreation department. Stiles Company for pipe and pipe supplies for maintenance of water distribution system in the amount of $15,000 as requested by the water department. H.R. Prescott for pipe and pipe supplies for maintenance of the water distribution system in the amount of $15,000 as requested by the water department. Island Technical Services LLC for upsetting new cruisers to enhance functionality, safety, and efficiency in the amount of $51,692 as requested by the police department. And Statewide Aqua Store for Prospect Hill mixer replacement in the amount of $19,000 as requested by the water department.
I didn't hear any holds, but just last call for any questions about these. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase orders as described in the agenda.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
All right, and then contracts. Tie sales for water meters, radios, and accessories for replacement program and installations in the amount of $30,000 as requested by the water department. And then tie sales for meter data management platform subscription renewal in the amount of $18,420 and 42 cents as requested by the water department.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the contracts as described in the agenda. So moved.
There you go.
All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Any questions about correspondence tonight? If not, I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of correspondence.
So moved.
There you go.
All those in favor, Noel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We do have two members of the public. Did we cover anything?
Well, I'm sorry, but we were a little late. We were here for the 7:10 public hearing for the D. Donato Drive. So we were a little late, so.
Okay. But if, I mean, if you have a question, an informational question, we can...
Yes, you can come there, or it's okay here.
Yeah, do we, you don't need to reopen the public hearing.
I would, no, but I would come to the mic just so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, yeah, please come on. Thanks, Chris.
No problem.
Thank you. So I live on D. Donato Drive along with my neighbor, and I'm speaking on behalf of our three other neighbors. So we have six houses, and I'm speaking on behalf of all. So we all moved in recently, last year in D. Donato Drive. Now, there is a cul-de-sac and then middle area around circle that is currently, I mean, until now, I believe, was owned by us to maintain, and as far as I know, now it's being maintained, going to be maintained by city, because that's what builder told us. So the question we have is, how often is it going to be maintained? And then, right now, they have six buses in middle, and we would like to see if there's a possibility for us to remove those buses, replan there somewhere in our neighborhood, and make, put a gazebo or something for our kids to play, because we all neighbors have kids. We have seven kids in middle. Because of the buses in middle, there's, nobody's using it, I cannot use it. So we were thinking either put gazebo on expense of D. Donato Drive neighbors, or make something, playground or something.